Call the city council meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Bokey.
Here.
McCann.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Dotson.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
And Mayor Jessup.
Here.
We've all seven of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise as Councilmember Burbank leads us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to a perfect night to be inside in Minnesota. First up on our agenda tonight is 1.2, a public hearing for proposed assessments on unpaid costs for grass and weed compliance. And with that, we've got 1.2.1, the Resolution 70-25 for proposed assessments on unpaid grass-weed compliance. And with that, we turn it over Fire Chief Ed Hoffman. Good evening, sir.
No, Kevin.
To agenda.
How to approve the agenda?
Oh, well, that's okay. I apologize. First thing we need to do is approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now we'll go to Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, President Rainey, Council. So for the resolution, we have 70-25 for assessments for unpaid weed and nuisance expenditures incurred by the city. As you know, the Oatana Fire Department enforces City Code for mowing of weeds and grass and other harmful vegetation. Throughout the year, the assessment roll includes, and it's an update from what we had someone just pay, so the current unpaid role includes 19 parcels for a proposed assessment amount of $5,178.30 as of today. See, just going through, basically, this is the unpaid pieces to pass on to the county for, to be assessed on property taxes. With these, there is no cost to the city. This is reimbursement for the mowing costs when we hired the contractor and then the assessment or the administrative fees with this. So staff recommends approval of Resolution 70-25.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing at 7:02 PM. Anyone wishing to come forward and discuss this item, please do so at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close hearing.
Motion by Doug to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We now have the Resolution 70-25 with this, and are there any questions for Chief Hoffman on this? I do have one question, Chief. At the bottom, number 19, Mary Kaplan, there is no administration fee. Is there a reason why there's no fee on that one?
Yes, that one, the fee was waived because of some miscommunication. It didn't get sent to the right property owner. So in negotiation with the property owner, we agreed to waive the administrative fee and they were going to pay the actual mowing costs, and that is the one that was paid yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Dan to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are now up to the Mayor Jessup. Mayor, have you got anything for us this evening?
I do. Thank you, Council President Rainey. Tonight, I had the opportunity and privilege to kick off Red Ribbon Week in Oatana, proclaiming October 20th to the 25th as Red Ribbon Week and encouraging kids to live a clean, drug-free, alcohol-free, vape-free life.
That's it tonight?
That's all.
Thank you. We're now up to consent agenda. Items for approval, consent agenda consists of city council meeting minutes, other board commission minutes, licenses, permits, and miscellaneous items all grouped together for the council to review prior to the meeting and vote on collectively. With that, I will entertain a motion on these consent agenda items.
So move.
Motion by Dan to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now up to the action items. First action item tonight is the finance report. With that, we go to Vice President Doug Voss. Good evening.
Thank you, President Rainey. Checks over $20,000 for consideration of approval tonight are as follows. $21,575 to Central Farm Service for fleet fuel, $613,230 to Crane Creek for CIP overlay estimate number one and asphalt, $34,950 to Faribault Air Conditioning and Heating for tube heaters and mechanical area and park shop, $159,943 from the ground up, that is the 25 storm damage tree removal cost, $32,577 to Innovative Masonry Restoration for repair and tuck pointing estimate number one, $60,449 to Legent Subsidiary Holdings ICAS for Public Safety Center and Community Center, $32,739 to the Oatana area Chamber of Commerce for the August lodging tax, $155,629 for Southeast Service Cooperative, that is the October 25 health insurance premiums, and $231,382 for other expenditures. Grand total for your approval tonight, $1,342,477.57.
Thank you. Any questions on the finance report? Steve?
I had one question, and I talked to Jenna about it on Monday. The bill that jumped out at me was the $160,000 for, from the ground up. Partially, that's going to be reimbursed, you said.
That's what I, uh... Yes, that's in for the submit, smittle for the storm damage, and I believe it's up to 75%.
Yes, the governor has approved the disaster declaration, so we'll reimburse 75% of our costs. We are in the process of filling out that paperwork right now to submit to the state for reimbursement, so that will be included in that.
Is that kind of the final number, then, there? Is there going to be any additional?
Not yet.
Off the top of my head, I do not know. That might be the final number for that part of it, but we had a lot of other contracts and just the internal work that we've done too that's all included in our disaster declaration.
Would you be able to give a ballpark as to what kind of additional costs will be?
The top of my head, give me a second, I can probably come up with it here.
I remember off of my memory, Mr. Burbank, it was around $700 or $800,000.
Yes, that sounds in the ballpark.
We'd be looking at 75% of 800,000?
Yes. And all those costs aren't necessarily direct costs. A lot of, some of that, quite a bit of that cost is our labor time also that we're paying anyways, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Hearing none, look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Dan to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Don. Any further discussion?
No, it was Nate.
Oh, wasn't you? Nate, I'm sorry, that was Nate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have one ordinance tonight. It is 3.2.1. It is the first reading for proposed ordinance 25-12, amended City Code, Chapter 122 Cannabis Regulation. And with that, we will go to City Attorney Mark Walbrand. Good evening.
This year, the state legislature adopted an amendment requiring businesses selling low potency hemp products, which were previously required to be registered with the Minnesota Department of Health under Minnesota Statutes 151.72, to be licensed instead. There are currently 43 low potency, uh, health hemp product purveyors in the Steel County, 12 of which are within the city limits. The city and the county have a working group that met most recently on October 7, including the city administrators, the Oatana Police Department Chief, the Community Development Director, our County Sheriff, and other county public officials, health officials, to discuss whether our ordinance should be amended to include the low potency hemp product restrictions. It was the consensus of the committee to go ahead and pursue having appropriate amendments to our ordinance. It was also the consensus of the group that the access to low potency hemp products be limited to people who are over the age of 21, that access to the stores would be those establishments that limit entry versus only age 21 or over. The provision has been made in the statute to allow those existing businesses to sell out what inventory they may have before the end of the year. The local ordinance that we've put before you is a composite of our existing Hanipin, our existing hemp ordinance as well as our existing cannabis ordinance. We had the good fortune of having some of the county public health people here during our earlier study session, and Ethan Renfleisch was of great help in getting this together. So if there are any questions about it, sorry I stumbled over my words here, but just fire away if you have any questions about it.
As Mr. Walbrand said, we did have this in part of our study session tonight. Any questions for Mark? Hearing none, what is the council's wishes?
I would move to pass.
Yes, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Motion by Dan, second by Don. Any further discussion? Nate?
I think we did have some questions regarding this, so if we gave answers to those prior to the next, next reading of this, that'd be great. Is the effect this was going to have on existing business?
I would, I would agree. There were a lot of questions that, not a lot, but there were some questions that we need answers to, and so potentially make it, make another study session with it so we can get our information.
Wouldn't you like that study session before the next one on the 5th?
Yes, I think, I think that would be the best.
For additional conversation.
That would be the best way to, to go with it.
Absolutely.
Nate, would you agree with that? Any other questions? We have a motion, a second, this being an ordinance. I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Bokey.
Aye.
McCann.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Dotson.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. What just happened? I had a motion to pass. He seconded it. We all said aye to pass and adopt this ordinance.
No.
Nate did not make a.
We have to vote individually.
Nate did not make a motion, nor got it second. So we just passed this ordinance, I believe, correct?
There's two readings to the ordinance.
This is the first hearing.
Okay, okay.
So we pass it for this front.
Okay.
Because Nate had in the discussion section something he would like to see discussed at the next.
Good, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Rainey, may I, please?
Yes, Jeff, I'm sorry.
I think it would be helpful for City Administrator Tuma and myself to know what those specific questions are. One of those, as I recall, was county compliance, number of tobacco licenses. And the tobacco ordinance in Oatana, I looked that up prior to this meeting. There are no buffer zones for tobacco, so that should answer that question. If you could just help us clarify, staff, clarify what questions you need answered for us before the next meeting would be helpful.
I guess the buffer, the buffer one for me, I, you know, you, there's no buffer for tobacco or other products in this town. This one seems to be singled out, and you have to be 21 to purchase, so I just don't see that that's a necessary thing to have in, in our ordinance. But I'll leave that up to the council.
Right. Part of that is regulated by current state law, and we're adopting, really mirroring what the state law allows us to do, although it allows cities and counties to go more restrictive if possible.
So we can go more restrictive, not less.
Correct.
Okay.
And I would just, if you could just help us identify what questions you have, and we'll come back to you with answers.
Okay. Thank you. We have three resolutions tonight. The first one is 3.3.1, Resolution 71-25, Steel County Emergency Operation Plan. And back to Chief Hoffman.
Thank you, President Rainey, Council. So yes, Resolution 71-25 is for approval of adoption of the Steel County Emergency Operations Plan. Little background on this, rather than us developing and maintaining our own separate emergency operations plan, we work with the county, participate, and are included in their plan. This is part of a four-year cycle. We're in the fourth year of the planning cycle. We just received approval from Homeland Security Emergency Management of the plan, so the next step is to request all the, a local adoption of the plan by resolution. So the last time we had this was 2021, and it gets updated again through this cycle. There is no budget impact, and the staff recommends approval of Resolution 71-25.
Questions for Chief Hoffman?
Just to note, we included basically the table of contents in there. As the plan is confidential, it talks about our emergency response to different things. I know we do have the president set up to access it in certain city leadership, and then also if you have questions, Emergency Manager Kristen Saylor from the county is here also.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Doug to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up tonight is Resolution 72-25, Select Vendor for Paid Family Medical Leave. And with that, tonight, we turn to our brand-new Human Resources Director, Rachel Voss. Good evening and congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. So we're looking to seek approval on selecting Madison National Life Insurance Company as the city's vendor for paid family medical leave, private plan effective January 1, 2026. Little background on this, effective January 1, 2026, Minnesota employers are required to participate in the paid family medical leave program under the Minnesota Statute, Chapter 268B, which provides partial replacement during qualifying family or medical leave. Employers may either participate in state administrative plans or provide coverage under an approved private plan substitute. The city intends to meet this requirement through a private plan administered by Madison National Life Insurance Company, the city's current long-term disability carrier. Madison National Life, through National Insurance Services, has provided a quote for PFML coverage at a rate of 0.78% of wages, with a one-year guarantee effective January 1, 2026. Under state law, premium contributions are shared between employers and employees. However, the city is recommending 100% of the PFML premiums for 2026. The city anticipates a budget impact of $140,000 for 2026, and this has already been included in the proposed budget for 2026. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Rachel on this?
I don't have any questions, but I, I don't think the city should be paying the full premium for this. I mean, based on state law, this isn't something that's being dictated by the state for all employers in the, in the state, that I think it's more of a sharing balance between the employer and employees. I mean, I see it as a payroll tax, so I'd be in favor of the, the city paying for 50% of the premium and then the employers picking up the, the other 50% of the premium. To me, it's, it's a, it's a tax on wages to help fund a, a balance for the state for this Paid Family Leave Act.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I just, I just echo Brent's comments. I fully expect this to not be funded well enough to fulfill all the obligations as soon as this gets off the ground, and I don't want us to be saddled with 100% coverage, because if we do that, it's going to go up, I think significantly. So I do think the employees need to have a stake in that. So I would also be in support of the 50% premium.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Doug?
Rachel, when, when this came out, I still had my business, and we spent lots of time trying to read and understand and figure out what in the world was going on with this deal. I don't think it's probably gotten a lot clearer in the last couple of years. Do you guys have a good grip on what this is?
Yeah, we've tended multiple, multiple webinars, and it's changing every single day. You learn something through every single webinar, and it is a learning process, and that's why we're asking for only one year to see what that first year looks like, and then we're able to reevaluate at that point. And we do currently have closed contracts with unions.
And you're fairly confident that Madison National Life understands it?
Yes, correct. They had to get their private plans approved by the state, and there's only a select few private plans that did get selected, and they have to be equal or greater than what the state is offering. And with going through the private plan, we did get a better rate of 0.78, whereas a state plan would have 0.88%.
Okay. Well, we'll hope to get a report after one year and see what crazy things have happened, so. Don McCann?
Rachel, the question I've had is, the 100%, you're recommending that because we've already signed the contracts with our unions, or?
That is one of the reasons, yes.
Okay. What are the other reasons that you're looking at as far as 100%?
A few of the other reasons are, we do want to show that we are an employer of choice, so being that, setting the example with the community, that we are investing in our employees and the time off, the administrative work behind the scenes of it. So if we do pay that 50, we do the state statute of 50%, then we are going to have to really work with collecting premium contributions back if employees go out and do not return, as well as it will help streamline our processes. We'll be able to start taking deductions on day one and really help with our retention and recruitment. If employees do see these premium costs come out of their paychecks, they're more likely to use it more, whereas the city's paying that full benefit. We're hoping that employees do use it for the required reasons and come back as soon as they are able.
Thank you. Dave?
Rachel, I think you just touched on a few of the areas that I had a question about, but to me, it looks like it's definitely an incentive for new employees, young people coming on that are married and want to start a family. I guess I appreciate the city stepping up and paying for that first year, but then we will look at it a year from now and see how everything's going.
Understanding.
So thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just a comment. Initially, I agreed with Brent and Nate, but I think if we're going to err on something that's new, I'd rather err on the side of our employees. If it doesn't go well, if it's outrageously expensive, we can reopen negotiations at the next contract and see what happens then with the wages. I would rather err on the side of our culture and our, we want to be an employer of choice and our employees. I'm going to vote yes on this.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have another comment, if I could, Kevin.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, didn't want to cut you off. I, like Mr. Bokey, it was, what Brent and Nate said, I was in favor. I'm really struggling with 100% deal. And having Rachel explain it helped from an understanding, but I, I agree, going forward, we need to look at some other way to do this, because I, 140 grand in a time when, you know, things are getting tight. I understand it from the employee side, you know, it's tight for them. I look at, out in the audience, and their Chamber of Commerce is sitting there, and people are struggling with that as well. So, just a comment.
Any other questions? So I've got, I've got a question or two, Rachel.
Mm-hmm.
What is so magical about one year? Why couldn't we go six months and analyze that six, the six-month period?
There is only one-year contracts out there right now.
Okay.
We have to file with the state, and then we are not able to change plans throughout the year.
And if we turn it to 50%, are there ramifications in regard to union contracts?
Yes, currently, right now, there are employer attorney, attorneys for public employers that are erring on the side of caution for that. There is no final decision on whether or not what you can do with closed contracts.
Okay, thank you. So you've all heard the questions, comments, Rachel's responses. What's council's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Doug to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Those five and, five and two. So it passes. Thank you. Next up tonight is 3.3.3, Resolution 73-25, Brazos Electric Citation Software with, with Logis. And with that, we go to Police Chief Jeff Mundale.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council President Rainey, and City Council. It was recently brought to my attention by the Executive Director of Logis, which is Local Government Information Services, services, that they are reevaluating, reevaluating their ticket writer software. So what this software does is it allows us to submit an electronic ticket to the Minnesota court system, and that is the only way that the Minnesota courts will allow a citation to be received, is electronically. So this went into practice at least seven, eight years ago, Logis being our software vendor, and they provide us CAD support, which is computer-aided dispatch. They provide us GPS mapping support, field-based reporting, and they provide us RMS, Records Management System, support. So we've been with Logis for, I'm guessing, close to 20 years. We're part of a consortium. They, we have a joint powers agreement with them through our Steel Rice 911 Center. So it was brought to my attention that they need to update this ticket-writing software, and the company that they have identified through the Steering Committee was called Brazos. So the news that was delivered to me is they're, they're looking for member agencies to support this, and so that's why they need a commitment from organizations and departments that are supported by Logis for support, so they can go ahead and move forward with this new software. So Logis is contributing over $200,000 through their Public Safety Fund, and they're asking for agencies then to contribute based on their usage. So we currently pay close to $2,600 for our mobile ticket support now. Again, that system is kind of, it's old, and they've identified some issues such as the limitations of the product, lack of functionality, no future improvements or enhancements to the software, and even some security concerns. So it's over a decade old, so they're asking for support through council resolution that we move forward with Brazos software. So as the Chief of Police, I recognize that there is a need. Our hands are a little bit tied because we need this sort of software to do electronic citations, so I'm, I'm making a recommendation that we support this purchase. The budget impact for our organization is about $4,812. The total software package beginning in 2026 will be $7,413, but the current budget amount that I have right now is $2,601. So an additional $4,812 is what we will need to support this new software. So I'm making a recommendation to approve. I do have that money available in my 2026 budget, so I'm not asking for additional money during this budget cycle.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Chief Mundale?
I have one, Chief. Right now, it is budgeted to approve new body cameras, new software that, that's a totally separate program from this.
It is.
And do they, do they work together at all, or it's just absolutely two different things? One's baseball, one's football?
No, this is a really good question, and this Axon product, that technology product that we're looking at, actually works together with Logis and their CAD software. So the officers are going to really like this because it allows the, the, the call for service to be attached or integrated into their body cams so that it can tag, label and tag the event, because right now, the officers have to manually type in each body worn camera recording, whether they do it on their mobile device, or their keypad, or later at the station through the software. They would have to label each event so we can identify each case. Well, this Logis product, not necessarily Brazos, but the Logis product that they have, allows there to be that integration for auto-tagging, is what we call it. And the Axon product has that capability to integrate with Logis.
It will assist in expediting each, each service call.
Yep, the officers are going to really like it. It should reduce. It should reduce um human error on losing cases, so to speak, because you you mislabeled something by, for example, one digit, and it's difficult to find for our record staff.
Okay.
We can find it through GPS coordinates and this and that, date, time, but sometimes when officers are building their cases, if they have one digit off, um it doesn't go to the county attorney's office, and then we have a discovery issue. So the systems will work, and Axon has that capability.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Don, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one miscellaneous item tonight, three point four point one, letter of support. Uh we we received note uh from the Owatonna Chamber of Commerce uh in regards to decisions being made out at Alina and Mayo Clinic in regards to birthing services, and so with that, I will turn it over to Administrator Tuma.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this item is related to the recent changes that uh the Mayo Clinic health system has made in discontinuing the labor and delivery of babies at the Owatonna Clinic and Hospital. Having quality local healthcare services in Owatonna has been a longstanding practice and is an essential service, not only for this community, but for our regional, our surrounding communities. We serve as a regional hub, serve many people. This letter speaks to the importance and the urgency that the gap in services needs to get closed, and so staff is recommending um the signature and the support of this letter as we navigate these um waters ahead of us and on this show the support from our council to our community and to the uh health providers.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
Comment.
Questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Brent to approve. Do I have a second? Oh, Nate, I'm sorry, Nate, I'm missing you all night.
That's right.
Do I have a second? Second. Second by Dan, any further discussion?
Dave.
Comment. When I saw the email regarding Mayo shutting down the birthing out at uh our hospital, I'm pretty disappointed. Owatonna is a gem in this part of the state. It gets to be difficult. I understand what Mayo is doing. I kind of saw this coming years ago when they announced uh Destination Medical Center over there, and they didn't feel that they needed uh Owatonna open because they had other satellites. But if I were a young guy just coming to town, freshly married, wanted to start a family, if I found out that you can't have a baby in Owatonna anymore, and you've got a clinic sitting out there empty, wouldn't be too happy. And we are hoping that we can stay vibrant enough in this city to be thirty thousand people by twenty thirty, which is right around the corner. And uh I would hope that Mayo can take another look at that and 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 understand that we have a quality of life here that we're really willing to to fight for and um stay here, stay with us. We've been good neighbors, we can continue to be so.
Well said. Any other comments? I will say, we were made privy to this a week ago. This is extremely disheartening, frustrating. The the city of Owatonna, its citizens have done so much to support the growth, economic growth in this community over the last ten years, uh revitalizing downtown, which is never a done thing, but doing Cedar Avenue, uh Main Street being done next year, the new high school additions to Willow Creek, the middle school. We continue to land more jets every year out of our airport. We are a regional hub, and it is extremely frustrating that a community of twenty-eight thousand people potentially could be without birthing services. There are no birthing services in Wasika. There are none in Dodge Center, none in Austin, none in Albert Lee, Wasika. We are in a birthing desert. It's gotta stop. As I said, I am so frustrated that it has come to this point, and what I'm hearing is the end date is November sixteenth, that we're just gonna walk away from the table and not have another birth done at our state-of-the-art health facility. It's wrong. I would hope that the the management of Mayo and Alina would recognize this as a fault, sit down, figure out a way to get this resolved. That's my comment. Any other comments? Hearing none, we had a motion to second. Oh, Mayor.
Since since its founding in nineteen oh one, the Owatonna Hospital has sought to serve basic healthcare needs of Owatonna's residents. Now, over the last hundred and twenty-four years, we've grown, obviously, to a regional center. In the last couple of years, we have been stripped of local healthcare opportunities. Mayo is consistently downsizing operations. Since twenty twenty-three, we've lost the hospice house, the sleep lab, pharmacy, and a number of primary care providers and specialists that came to Owatonna to make it their home. Two years. The loss of local maternity care will have a lasting negative effect on all of Owatonna, economically, socially. These are people. These are not numbers. These are human beings. These are our family, these are our friends, these are our neighbors. Make no mistake, this is not about the day-to-day providers that we all go see. I have no doubt, when I go to see my doctor, that he cares for me from the time I walk in there to the time I walk out, and he checks on me later, too. I have no doubt about that. These providers care. This is not about them. This is about the system. It's time to put patients and not profits first. And it's time to give the people of Owatonna and the region around it the healthcare that they deserve and that they need. This is unacceptable. This is not okay. And like you, Kevin, President Rainey, I implore the leaders of Mayo, the leaders of Alina, to sit down, work this out, find a reasonable answer to this. This is a problem. These are people. These are human beings. Figure it out.
Well said. So we had a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Our staff report tonight is going to be Mr. Ryan Brown. He is our IT Director. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. What I want to kind of go over tonight is based on some concerns, comments, feedback I had gotten recently about OpenGov software. And so I just uh wanted to share some information I had gathered. Really, the purpose of the information I want to share with you is about um trying to show you all the different areas that this software touches, how important it is to us, um how much effort we've put into it, and what some of those successes that we've had using the software, and then also some of the opportunities that we do have to get better and and to grow with the software. We've made a significant investment in that software financially and staff time, and so I thought it would just be good to kind of give the council just a chance to hear about the software a little more, and then if you have questions or anything, please feel free to ask me. The information I'm gonna share with you was prepared from OpenGov themselves, so I wanted an outside perspective. So they have a lot of experts, uh they work in government, and they work with government agencies directly, and so they get to see how other governments are using the software, and so they can compare kind of where we're at in using and utilizing their software, and then um with that information kind of share with us, hey, here's here's some areas that uh you aren't doing so great yet, and here's some areas that you are, and here's how we can help you get even better. So the information I share with you tonight is not necessarily the kind of PowerPoint presentation I would normally want to share with you. There's a lot of information and words on there. I wanted to um take their comments that they shared and share those with you, and that's why there's a little bit more wording there. So as we go through this, I won't word for word go through all this with you, but um I want to give you some highlights.
Hey, Brian, will you move the mic a little bit closer to you?
Sure. Does that does that pick up a little better? Okay. All right, so just to start off with, we're gonna just talk about high-level kind of some of the main core areas this software and ERP system covers for the city. So our financial management, and that's general ledger, accounts payable, um accounts receivable, there's a lot of different pieces, the budgeting and reporting uh side of things is all included in that financial piece. And then I mentioned the budget and performance, and then we have procurement and contract management. So this software is more about going out for bid and getting uh vendors to be able to solicit for our uh business and be able to be very open about that process with our public as well, so they can see also those contracts being awarded. And then also um some contract management as well to that, where we can start keeping track of some of our larger contracts for um uh software renewals and different things, and then that can help us kind of keep track of costs and planning for the future as well. And then we have our enterprise asset management piece of the software, and this is the product that you're probably more familiar with called Cartograph. OpenGov had bought that product several years ago, and so they just referred to it as their enterprise asset management system. And then we have our permanent licensing as well. So a lot of our um through building inspections, zoning, planning zoning, and our engineering department, as well as administration for such things as liquor licensing or or other things can be processed through this system as well. So we'll start with uh financial management, some of the successes that OpenGov kind of highlighted as they looked at how we have been using it. One of the big things they highlighted was the integration we have between permanent and licensing and our general ledger. So when those um permits go through and transactions happen, we automatically have those being integrated and sent to our financial system in the general ledger, so they can see that information right away. In the past, they would just fill out spreadsheets manually and and send that off, so it streamlines those processes quite a bit. We also uh have some successes in transparency and accountability. They highlighted completing the twenty twenty-four audit and then publishing our digital budget books, which you guys as a council are well aware of, as we go through that budgeting process, um you get to see that online budget book as well, but also the public has that visibility as well. And then we have some governance and internal controls as a success, um so department POs and restricted GL access um promote some oversight and compliance in those areas. Some opportunities that we can get better. So bank reconciliation, they have um some areas there that they want to help us with to get better, um streamline our uh end-of-month processes and strengthen the financial controls. They also have looked at our whole list of chart of accounts, and they have some recommendations on how to do that a little better. And we'll be going through that with them to see if those are things we want to adopt, and then that will funnel into the budget and reporting part of things as well. And then our accounts payable automation, so mainly about invoice intake and that process, they can help streamline that. We've also been talking about we need one central place to process our invoices, um and so we're gonna be working on that as well. So procurement, so this is more that side of the system where we go out for bid on certain things. This product, uh they highlight some successes in the transparency we have by using the system, um the bid results, the awarded vendors, all that information's publicly available, and so we can prove that we're being fair and open in our purchasing. Vendor engagement, so this is another area where vendors all get to see that information as soon as it's available. They actually get notified when we put something out there, if they're a vendor we've worked with in the past, but also other vendors who work with other communities see that information as well. So anyone can, as soon as we put something out for bid, can see that, and we can get some really competitive pricing back for that. And then uh contract oversight, um so we we do have that available to us, and and we can see that and use that for our budget process and making um some forecasting, um analyzing that, uh planning for the future, but that's one piece you're gonna see on the next part, as well as where we can get better. So these are the opportunities, some of the opportunities they identified for us, um where we can get better. So the for the solicitation solicitation part of it, um the templates that we use, there can be a little bit more consistency, and we can get a little bit better on the documentation side of things. Contract management, we need to expand that, we need to start building out our inventory of the contracts we have, um and improve that area as well, and then our intake and requisition workflows, um that can be streamlined as part of our purchase requests as well, and all that can be integrated into the financial side of the system as well, once we start utilizing these tools a little further. So those are some areas we can work on. The asset management, um this is one of our most highly-used throughout the city products. I mean, whether it's the street department, uh vehicles, uh computer assets, you name it, we're trying to build up our our asset inventory in the system, and all departments across the city are pretty much using this, and we've even had some discussions with PD recently about maybe we should look at some of their assets and start recording those as well. But it takes time to work that up. You can see we've got over fifty thousand assets cataloged in the system, and that's across the city, and that's gonna help us long-term, because we'll be able to have some lifecycle cost tracking. We'll get to see, and when we have a vehicle, how much that vehicle has cost us over the year, we can plan for the future, same with computer assets, and we can start making better um decisions going forward. So here are some opportunities to get better with the asset management system that they identified. So we have task completion and data accuracy, so uh we are, even in the IT department, we use this for um when a support request comes in, it actually gets put into this system, and then we get work assigned to each of us in the department based on that, and then we can close it, and those are called tasks, that we actually do the work and close those tasks out. So that's what they're they're referring to that we can get better on. Not all the departments are using it to its full capability. Inspection routine and development, so this is about standardizing inspection schedules. I know the Parks Department has used it for inspecting playground equipment and other things, and they're just saying we we can even do better in that area and expand it out further, so we'll look at that. And I just missed the last one, and then just some enhanced cost capture, we could do a better job if we want to put the take the time to put in um our labor hours, our costs involved, the equipment, materials. Some areas are doing that to a small extent, but this is one area that they identified that we could even expand further. Permanent licensing, um this is one that I think is one of the biggest successes, just because they were so paper-based in their processes, um and now they really are starting to utilize the software to its full. And now they really are starting to utilize the software to its full. So you can see, we've had 2,300, just over 2,300 permits submitted through the system. They've completed over 3,700 inspections. And they've collected revenue through the system in the amount of $678,000 just from the year to the day. But that's just a small, and that's just part of the revenue they collect. Not everything gets processed through the system, but it's a big chunk of it. So all those things just kind of help for the efficiencies that that department's benefiting from in using it. And that's other departments as well. I mentioned building inspections, but again, it covers our administration when we talk about liquor licenses. It covers zoning permits. So other departments as well are utilizing this. All this is publicly accessible through a public portal. So we're trying to make that easy for our users to be able to find the type of permit they're looking for and to be able to submit that instead of having to come in person. And then cross-system integration. We use a product called Bluebeam, which is for plan review. So when the plans come in within the system, they can open them up, and it'll open up right in Bluebeam. They can do some notes and editing and markups and then save that and keep that as all part of that process. And then also, it integrates into OpenGov as well. So we get the financial side of things, but also some reporting features as well we can get from that system. So some opportunities. They're not utilizing it for the scheduling piece of it yet. So right now, people have to call in and make that appointment. But it could be used to allow them to have windows of times that they could ask for an appointment, and it could still be approved internally. But those are some of the pieces we can get better at. And then they're starting to try to use the mobile inspection piece on an iPad. So trying to get rid of the paper process. And so it'll be entered right away into the system. Then I'd have to bring a paper piece back that Nikki has to manually enter in later. So that's another opportunity. And then record type simplification. They just looked at the way we have things, and they think there's some simplification or things we could improve in that area as well. And we can talk to them more about that. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, just on a high, very high, quick level. Really, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, we talk about our purpose, that we create a better tomorrow. And I really do feel like this software, we invest a lot of time and effort into, and is helping us to get there. And it also aligns, I believe, really well with our core values as a city. Thinking about being better together, it's unifying our systems. It's getting our finance, procurement, our permits, plan review. And it's across all our departments are touching the system and using it. So that's really nice to have everyone talking the same language and working together in the same system. And then community stewardship. We have a lot of public-facing pieces to this. So that visibility and transparent reporting to them is a really great thing to have. And then pride in our work. It's more modern, it's user-friendly technology. It empowers our staff to perform with excellence, accuracy, and confidence. So I really do think that the software, even though we put a lot into it, fits in perfectly with what we're trying to achieve. So thank you. And does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
He's not going to look at me. I'm Nate. He's down.
Sorry, Nate.
Ryan, thanks for the presentation. How long do you envision it would take for staff to be able to utilize the opportunities that you outlined? Is it going to take a year or two years? Because it's a huge investment in OpenGov. It's the primary system, so we need to utilize it as much as possible.
Absolutely. So we've been at this, I think we purchased it in 2021, if I remember correctly. But I think it actually went live like later, like '22 or '23. And it takes, it's taken us years to get to where we are because it takes time to get the information in the system. It takes time to get our staff trained and comfortable with it, to really benefit from it. And it's going to take time with each of these pieces because our staff has got a lot on their plate. And they're doing their day-to-day jobs and trying to learn a new way to do their job. And in the end, it's going to get better, but it's hard sometimes to invest the time to get there because you still have to get your day-to-day stuff done. So I do believe this will be a process over a few years. I don't think it's something we can accomplish in a month or two.
Okay. So it's going to take some time with the training and going forward?
Each year, we're getting better, and we're adding new pieces to it. But it's, like I said, it touches every department in almost every facet of our business. So it takes a long time to work with all those different groups to get them up to speed and get them comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
Thank you. We are now up to the public comment portion. Please limit your comments to three minutes in time. Please approach the microphone, sign in, and state your name and address for the record after being acknowledged by the council president. Speakers will be limited to three minutes to deliver their comments. Council Vice President Voss will be timing and hold up a hand after 2 minutes 45 seconds to notify the speaker they have 15 seconds to complete their comment. Those speaking are asked to conduct themselves in a respectful manner as they deliver their comments. Audience members are asked to refrain from reacting to comments. The city council will not respond directly to comments in this venue or take immediate action in response to them.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Ashley Thorson. Do I have to state my address?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. 233 North Ridge Place, Northeast. Like I said, I'm Ashley Thorson. I have lived here in Owatonna for 10 years. What initially brought me to Owatonna was actually the clinic. I'm a women's healthcare provider. And while I no longer am providing that service here in town, what has kept my family and I here in Owatonna is this community. We have three small children. And when we were looking at where we wanted to settle down, because neither my husband and I grew up here in Owatonna, we really felt drawn to this community because of everything the community had to offer us as a growing family. Obviously, I am gravely concerned about the decisions that have been made this last week on Owatonna's healthcare campus in regards to women's health and delivering babies here in town. I am very concerned about the impact that this will have years and years in the future on this community. And so it means a lot that there's support from you guys in opposition as well of what is happening. I think that it's not only going to impact our community as far as growth and everything, but the longer that it takes to come to a solution for this, the higher the risk we are of losing some really specialized and skilled healthcare, or members of the healthcare team and the nursing staff. Labor and delivery nursing is highly specialized and not trainable in one month or even really one year. And we are very fortunate here in town to have incredible talent on that labor and delivery. And so I feel like the longer that this takes to come to a solution for the people of our community, the higher risk we are of losing that as well. So anyway, I just really appreciate your guys' support in opposing what's happening, knowing that we're dealing with two private entities. But it's still going to impact our community greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brad Meyer, 2592 Moss Creek Drive, Owatonna Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to thank you as well. I want to thank you for your comments, by the way. Appreciate that. This has been a difficult few days with the announcement from Mayo. And appreciate the city's time and energy jumping on this right away. Mayor Matt, Jenna, Kevin, and Doug specifically have been all pulled into meetings immediately. But I'm sure the rest of you are hearing from your constituents as well on this. But thanks for taking action today. It's going to be a journey ahead of us to try to continue to demand the services we think are important to this community and the growth of this community, the business communities behind this position as you are. So let's keep at it, and thank you for your efforts tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward, we will now go to council comment. And first up tonight is Councilmember Burbank.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Bulkey.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember McCann.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Svenby.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Voss.
Well, I can't pass it up. So I just wanted to get and make a few comments about that, too. One of the things I always talk about are basic things that we have to do as a council. And when you look at healthcare, there's nothing more of a basic core services than birthing services. Everybody here has been born, or lots of us have had kids. It's pretty important. In fact, it's really essential. So I really appreciate Brad, Mr. Meyer, and all the group that's come together this week, Mayor Matt, all the effort it's taken, and we're getting going on that. And since I'm an eternal optimist, I'll say I just encourage everybody involved to have, you know, calm, clear thoughts and figure this out, and let's get a resolution to it.
Well said. Mayor Jessup.
I got a text today from a friend. Said, "Let me know how my wife and I can be a voice for Owatonna and the clinic. We have a personal story with our daughter that if that birthing center wasn't in Owatonna, I wouldn't have my daughter today." That's one person, that is one story. That's one family that wouldn't have a child without that center, without that care available here in Owatonna. This is what we're facing. This is the truth. These are cold, hard facts. Without that center, we lose a lot. And it's not something we can afford.
Well said. Administrator Tuma.
I have two items. One, November 15th is our winter parking. I hate to say it, but our winter parking ordinance goes in. And so I just want to remind it. I know, go outside. Somebody has to be the bad. The other one is, on our next meeting, is actually on Wednesday because there's an election. And so, one, go out and vote, but, two, come on Wednesday to our meeting that'll be happening here. So we aren't on our regular schedule. So just want to remind everybody of that, and I guess go out and vote.
Thank you. For myself, first of all, I, did I miss?
Nate, did you get a chance?
It's all right. You skipped over me. It's all right.
I'm always an advocate for you.
Thank you, Don. I appreciate it.
Mr. Dotson. Have anything?
Oh, I wish I would say that. It's almost Halloween, so now watch out for those kids running around in costumes, specifically Napoleon Dynamite and Pedro for my kids. Watch out for the kids.
All right. Sorry about that, Nate. For me, first off, a good friend and strong supporter of Owatonna. And a congratulation to Annie and her husband on birth of their baby. That's very exciting. We have one more resident in Owatonna, and that's always exciting. Second thing, I'm going to go back to the Mayo-Alina thing. If all we do tonight, if all the chamber does is send out a letter to these and do nothing else, we have failed to do our job. We will not just, nor will the chamber just send a letter out. Our goal is to bring this to fruition, and we are very hopeful that we have a successful ending. As many of you have said, we have met numerous times this week. We will continue to meet. What we need is both sides to come to the table. And the sooner that we can do that and have frank discussions, the better our chance of being successful in continuing to have births in Owatonna. That is all I will say tonight with no other work for us tonight. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Show of.
Motion by Dan to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.